Right, good evening members and members of the public. If you're watching, if you're watching this live stream, welcome to tonight's full council. Just a couple of things really. Can I just ask everybody, I can see mobile phones around, I've just done mine. Turn your mobile phones to silent or turn them off and not use them while we've got the meeting. That'd be very grateful, thank you. Okay, item one, apologies, have apologies?
We have apologies from councillor Young who's unwell, councillor Stuart Piper who is unwell, and councillor Wing who has a personal commitment.
Okay, nobody else, nobody else been asked to apologise for anybody? Thank you. Item two, any declarations of interest on tonight's agenda?
Well, an interest in the skate park item because I'm part of the committee, but the town clerk has advised that...
They actually, I believe that councillor Austin has another significant interest in the skate park. But because of that knowledge, which members may wish to hear about, that a dispensation be granted?
Absolutely.
So that councillor Austin can talk on the matter but then step outside for the vote.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And because you've got that knowledge, that would be very, the members would be very grateful for that. Right, item three, public participation, public request to speak, do we have any?
None.
No, no public participation. So 3.2, report from district councillors on matters directly relating to Ramsgate. Has any councillor this evening who are from TDC wished to say anything at all about their areas?
Can I ask a question?
It's great.
The minutes of the previous meeting state that you and the town clerk were going to discuss the remit of that agenda item.
We'll get to the minutes, and item four.
But I'm asking that because I want to know how it affects that agenda item today.
Well, you can always come back on the minutes and then come in with that. So can we deal with it that way?
Yes.
All right, if we can deal with it that way, I'd rather deal with it that way, if that's okay. Okay, item three, 3.3, report from county councillors on matters directly related to Ramsgate. There are no county councillors here, did they, have they notified? That's good, okay. Item four, minutes of council meeting. Has anybody got anything to say in relation to the minutes? Well, there's a surprise councillor.
I'm just wondering what the outcome of 10622 was, please.
Can you re- affirm each of that, I don't know what it is.
Councillor Albin and the town clerk will discuss the remit of the agenda item.
Which was?
Yes, report from district councillors on matters directly related to Ramsgate.
We've got a Groundhog Day theme about this item.
To the town clerk, always.
I believe that the last meeting was discussed that instead of members giving potentially a wealth of updates on things specific to all the wards, that members would provide if there's anything that they want noted for the record with the council, but that is relevant to all of Ramsgate. Yes.
Need to do that. Okay. Anybody else have any convoluted things in relation to the minutes at all? No, I'll take that as a no then. You move on, item five. Sorry Chair.
So, does it vote on the accuracy of those minutes?
Yeah, I propose they're accurate, but there you go.
Yes, very much. Seconda?
Our seconda.
All in favour? Thank you. Thank you councillor Nixie for that. Committees, five, sorry. Item five, committees 5.1 to consider appointing a vice chair of the town promotion committee. Do we have any nominations?
Could I nominate councillor Huxley, please?
Accept that councillor Huxley?
Does anyone else want to do it?
Anybody else?
Someone?
Okay, as there is no others, everyone, that's, you're the only candidate and you accept that, then you are the vice chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Well done. So, item 5.2, to receive and consider a written report from the town clerk regarding voting on appointments.
Thank you Chair. Obviously, at the annual town meeting and the last meeting, there's been confusion over how appointments are resolved. My professional opinion is that decisions of the council should be made in the one way. There's a motion, there's a seconda, there's a vote taken. However, I don't understand, this is, it's not a legal requirement in relation to the voting on appointments. So members may wish to agree an alternative method. And in addition to that which I put in my report, councillor Green has come back with a slight variation on that. Councillor Green, I'm afraid I haven't got your amendment, I can go and grab it?
I haven't got it either, but it's very, very slow. Which is...
Want me to read it out?
Okay.
Yeah, I was about to say.
Don't talk amongst yourselves, I'm a rost it, sorry.
Which is, if there's more than one candidate for a post, then councillors will vote on each candidate. And if, if... And however many candidates have votes, we'll get the post provided as a majority. You'd better read it out.
You found it now? Okay, I mean, if it helps, I'll read out then, I'll read out what the, what the town clerk's written. Is that when voting on appointments, all nominations will be received. Councillors will be asked to cast a vote for their preferred candidate only. And or vote will be taken for all candidates in the order of which the nominations were received or alphabetical. Where there is more than two candidates and no absolute majority, the procedure extending orders eight, eight open brackets, eight closed brackets will be used.
I've got yours.
I've got David's. It's Green's wording now.
Okay, do you want to read it out?
So councillor Green suggests, when voting on appointments, all nominations will be received. Councillors will be asked to vote on each candidate that has been nominated and seconded in order of nominations received. Whether are two nominations only, the candidate with the most votes will be elected. Whether are more than two nominations, the candidate with the most votes will be elected, unless no candidate receives an absolute majority of those voting. Then the candidate receiving the lowest number of votes will be removed and voting repeated.
Yeah, yeah, that might change, yeah.
It's just that, at the last meeting, I think, some members...
Got a bit confused?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And that would allow...
Are you proposing it?
Yeah, I propose that.
Do we have a seconda for that? Councillor Harrington? All in favour of that? That's carried, thank you. All right, and that's that. Right, okay. Item six, finances, including grants. Now, there are 11 appendices to this, to this item. So I intend to take them one at a time, just to make sure that we're all, that we know what ones we're doing. So 6.1 is to receive a report of payments. The council is asked to note the payments authorised by the town clerk and RFO and approve the payments above the threshold delegated to the town clerk and RFO. Which are, if you've got those, have you seen those, have you looked at those?
Yes.
A, B and C. Anybody got any questions or queries in relation to that? Councillor Green?
I've had clarification from the town clerk. I would have found it more useful if included in the parent approval list. Ones that have been approved by this council now. There was an extra column that showed the budget from which these payments came from. I've received that clarification, so I'm happy with it.
And I was going to say that on Edge, I can't produce that information, but I could produce it myself for you. But I can also, I can also produce several different reports. So this is a report specifically for council to approve. But I'm with the town clerk looking at a variety of reports I've never used before. So this is like an ongoing situation for you. But we're trying to build up decent reports that we can bring to council each time and to FNGP.
Anybody else got any comments? Wish to make? Anybody got a proposal? In that case? Proposal to accept, seconda councillor Nixie. All those in favour? Thank you. Right, item 6.2 is to receive a written report from the town clerk and RFO regarding authorisation of Radford House project manager invoices and authorisation of work to be funded by the Architectural Heritage Fund project development grant.
I'm really sorry, can I just go back to the previous item? I know you moved on.
No, done.
It's not, it's just there's an issue, perhaps it was just a point of order, that you have been here, the name of a resident is on that list. And I don't know if that's appropriate.
Yeah, no, you're quite correct.
Did you only just spot that?
I was spotting it as you were moving on, and I suddenly realised because it's one of my residents.
And I just think that...
Well, that's fair, fair comment, but...
I'm sorry, I appreciate.
Yeah.
It's down near the bottom, you think it would be a issue?
Yeah, it's at the under of the list. It's B. Page three, penultimate and pre-penultimate items on that list. I don't know if there are any others that are particularly residents, but that one is...
On B?
Page three.
Talking about litter pickers who...
Yes.
Okay, that's because the payment was made via the bank in that name. But if that is an issue for members, I can within Edge take the names out. It's just so that it matches perfectly to the banking account.
Yeah.
But I can find a way, I'll find a way around it.
I just think it's something we should be aware of. And I don't know if there are any others, I don't recognise any others in there, but I do recognise that one, so...
Okay, well, thank you for raising that. That's all, no, thank you for raising it, I wasn't sure what you were going to say, that's why I thought we'd done with it and moved on. Okay, back to 6.2, in relation to Radford House over the town clerk.
The contract with the Radford House project manager has now been signed and they're raring to get going. I had a handover meeting with them this afternoon to share with them all our paperwork. There is, within their approved costs, there's different stages as they move through the project. And within my report, I'm asking the council to consider whether as they reach these stages, these payments to them can be authorised in conjunction, myself in conjunction with councillor Nixie and councillor Green in order to ensure prompt payment to our project manager. And I don't know if members want to consider that, and then I'll go on to the second question.
Yeah, we can, yeah. Members, any comment councillor Huxley?
Councillors, if we're not happy with the work that they're doing, do we withhold?
Yes, I think that would be for councillor Nixie, Green and myself to...
So...
Yeah.
Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Can I have a proposer? Councillor Austin, seconda, councillor Nixie, all in favour? Thank you. And second part?
And the second part is that we have a grant from the Architectural Heritage Fund for just over £52,000, and then there's match funding from the town council. There's funding of £58,300 to be used by mid-September. Part of that money is covering the Radford House project management, but there's other costs in here. For example, green energy investigation, asbestos survey, business plan development. And whether in order to get this funding spent in time, whether again, members would consider authorising myself in conjunction with councillor Nixie and Green authority to sign off on these expenses within the remit of the grant and with the Architectural Heritage Fund's authority.
To me, that makes absolute sense.
Yes.
I'll propose that myself. Councillor Harrington, seconda, all those in favour? Thank you. Carried. Item 6.3, as per the financial regulations, council is asked to reconfirm that staff salary payments should continue to be made by the BACS system.
So propose that.
Second?
Yeah.
Anyone, any questions? All in favour? Carried, thank you.
How the system would be made?
Item 6.4, as per financial regulations, council is asked to reconfirm that payment by variable direct debit is acceptable in relation to payments, electricity, gas, water, I won't go through the rest of it, vehicle tax, fuel, technicians' orders, screw fix for instance, and security monitoring.
Second?
Go on, all through, thank you. We might do that. Right, item 6.5, to receive and note the financial statement cashbook for the 2021/22 financial year. The details contained there informed the annual governance and accountability return. Would you wish to say anything?
Just briefly, this is not necessarily the ideal report, but as the deputy town clerk has mentioned, she's currently investigating that the different types of reports that can be run. But this is just to give you some greater information on the figures that went into informing the annual governance and accountability return.
Can we propose that?
Propose, seconda? Would that two agree? All agreed?
Yeah.
Well, I was trying to move on from the room. Right, item six of six, to consider the findings of the review of effectiveness of the system of internal control, page three of the annual governance and accountability return for the year ending 31st of March 2022, and a covering letter from the internal auditor. Has anybody got any, any views in relation to the auditors' report? Basically, having read it, it appears to be a clean bill of health from us, so...
Yes, yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah. Again. Yeah. Proposed, seconda councillor Harrington? All in favour? Carried. Right, item 6.7, let me see if I can put it in Rome. To approve the annual governance statement by resolution, section one of page four of the annual governance and accountability return for the year ending 31st of March 2020.
So I'm, would be confident in the council answering yes to all of the questions on this page, one through to eight. I don't know whether members would like me to read these out, or whether they've all seen the questions?
You all got them, are you all happy with it? So anybody want to propose acceptance? Councillor Green, councillor Nixie, seconda, all in favour? Thank you. Right, let's have an item eight, 6.8. To approve the accounting statements for 2021/22, section two, page five of the annual governance and accountability return of the year ending 31st of March 2022. Anybody, any comments? Commissar Chair? Proposed for acceptance by councillor Nixie, seconda? Councillor Harrington? All in favour? Carried, thank you. 6.8, to approve the accounting statement of 2021/22 of the annual governance and accountability return of the year ending... Oh, have I just done that one?
Yeah.
Thank you, I thought it sounded, I thought it sounded the same. I thought it sounded the same. 6.9, to review and approve the financial risk assessment. Town clerk?
The auditor has previously flagged up that this has been addressed quite late in the year in the past. And so I do appreciate that it's a document that would usually come via the Finance and General Purposes Committee. But I think that there's merit in this being part of the annual raft of paperwork that's addressed at once. So I would ask for the, approve it tonight with any emergency amendments it would like, and then it go to FNGP for greater consideration.
How could you? The risk assessment, it needs to be done.
Proposer? Councillor Nixie, seconda, councillor Cretton, all in favour? Thank you. Point 10, to receive a written report from the town clerk and RFO regarding the role of the independent internal auditor.
So, may I?
Please do, town clerk.
So within our report, I detail the scope of the internal audit, their independence and their competence. And the current independent internal auditor is recommended by Kent Association of Local Councils, he is suitably qualified. I would not suggest that we need to look elsewhere. However, it did come to my attention that we're, he's commissioned to do the absolute minimum work. And to put it into context, we currently pay him £220 to order a million pound precept. And what he's doing covers the minimum requirement and there's not a problem. But I would say that the council should not be hesitant or worried about inviting greater financial scrutiny by the independent internal auditor. I would expect for our level of funding, him to be doing a much greater depth of work. And it doesn't mean spending 10 times the amount. But I think he should be coming to see us halfway through the year. And also, we give him a greater scope of things that he should be looking for. And I don't think this is something that the council should be nervous or worried about. I think it's a healthy relationship to have with your auditor.
Councillor Nixie?
Thank you, and I would have assumed he would also, having the experience of auditing other councils, be saying, have you tried this, or you should be looking at this, or, you know, this is something that could better us. So that's really where I'd want him to be focusing on, not just his your competence, but as a case of like, you could actually be better than you are before, so I'm more for it.
All right, thank you.
I was just going to say that particularly if we're thinking about taking on more work as time goes on, it's going to be a good practice to have in place, isn't it? And it covers everybody's backs if we are doing this as well as potentially picking up some tips of things we might do better.
Great.
Yes, I think in the past, it's been that money has been tried to save, but hopefully the public would actually be assured by us giving ourselves greater financial scrutiny.
Yes.
Indeed. Does anybody want, anyone want to propose something? Propose that, that we... How are we going to...
Do you want the two recommendations dealt with separately, town clerk?
Two recommendations in the form. So, first of all, at the moment, we don't have a training budget for councillors. I think this is something that we should look into for next year.
Something I've raised with the town clerk that we need to do. We need, we all need a bit of training about something, it must be something that we all could do, you know, no matter how good. You, I mean, it's up to you members as to what you want. For instance, to be having, asking if they should be looking at extended items that we do within the council, how those extended items are costing, and also to come back, to go do it on a six monthly basis? I mean, do you think that's okay? And then obviously, we need to see what he's going to charge us. And then the result can come to FNGP. Would that be the right place, I think?
Yes.
So I would propose that councillor Huxley?
Choice of who we choose to be the auditor. Is there any particular reason why we have one particular person?
No, we could take it out to tender and seek, and seek other quotes.
Isn't that what you just said at the beginning there, we use the bare minimum? Now it's open for, who can we get that's better? I'm just saying, what are the sort of parameters that... I mean, why do we choose one particular person over someone else? Yeah, so we could, yeah.
I suspect that's been customer practice, I suspect. Yeah, so councillor Cretton?
There is an advantage in, as long as we're confident of the competence, there is an advantage in maintaining a relationship with one company because they actually know us and how we work. So as long as we're happy that they're competent at their job, then I would be quite happy to see some of us.
That's point of view.
Yeah.
So, can I have a add in that we go out to tender? If you think that's the right thing councillor Green?
I think as we're changing, extending what we're doing, that would be a good time.
Yeah, okay. So we can add that in as well. So I'll add that, councillor Harrington?
Well, I mean, whilst I agree with what councillor Cretton says, it's also sometimes good to get fresh eyes on a situation, and it might be helpful if you go out...
I agree, I'd like to go to town. If you go to favour somebody, you want to see what the best is out there, can you afford them? If not, you know, match it accordingly.
Absolutely. So, have we got that down as to what we...
It's got a proposal to take it to tender.
Take it to tender, yeah, so we'll do that. Are you all in favour of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also Chair, to him, her, him, she to come in two times a year to look at it.
Yeah, yeah, that was, I was giving that as a take, so, yeah, that was what... All in favour of that? Sorry councillor Cretton, did you want to speak?
Yes, but I was just wanting to go back and say, that's the recommendation at the top of page three. Are we doing the recommendation of page two at the same time, or is that separate? Have we done it?
Well, no, we're just adding that together.
No.
Why not? We're talking about, we're talking about the same, the same thing.
We've been crossing over the conversation.
I know, but we've been, yeah.
I'm on the same page.
No, 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 you are, you are, but it's a different page. But we're just adding it together.
Sorry. I believe councillor Nixie's motion was for, it was in relation to the auditor. I think possibly a bit of both in relation to the training.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
I missed that, okay. Oh, thank you. Oh yeah, the training, yeah. Okay, so we're all in favour of the first one. So the second part then, and thank you councillor Cretton, is in relation to the training. Um. But there is no budget for such training. Um, I, I mean, I think we need to get a list of what the, what training courses there are, who does the training, all of that. And for that to come back to F and G P.
I propose.
Please.
On that recommendation on page, in the middle of page two, um, can we just expand it a little? Um, because we've got to ensure the councillors clear regarding the responsibilities, et cetera. And then there is currently no budget for such training. Um, maybe this is the time to expand it to review what training may be required and to cost that out. And then look at implementing the budget for training.
Well, that's what I've just.
I'm putting it into the wording in the motion.
Yeah, well, you don't have to go by the motion, but we're just saying that that is what we, we just said that we was going to do. So.
Are we agreeing it as part of that motion?
Well, it's up to you. It's up to you guys, you, you want to agree or, or do you agree it separately? So it's totally up to you. Do you want to propose that?
I think we should.
Okay.
Seconded.
Seconded. You all know what you're voting on.
No, I'm, I'm clear that, I'm clear. I'm not, come on.
Yes. Your training needs and what training is available.
That is what, there's no point in agreeing something for training when we, we don't know what training it is.
I thought that's what you just said.
That's what I just suggested.
Okay.
Yes, but I'm asking for it as a.
Take that information to F and G P, you're setting the whole project accordingly.
We could confirm that in that motion if that's, if that's what you want, I mean, that's fine, it doesn't really matter. But I'm happy to, to take that, all in favour of that?
Yes.
Fine, thank you. Well, that's item, uh, eleven. To receive a written report from, uh, Mrs E Richford, it says here. Deputyship Town Clerk regarding the Ramsgate Fund and consider the application contained therein, along with the request to vary the project timeline for a previous application.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Ramsgate Fund, um, is thirty five thousand, that's the target. Um, applicants can receive up to ten percent, which is three thousand five hundred. Awards to date are, uh, only two thousand six hundred and twenty six, so it's a healthy budget of thirty two thousand three hundred and fifty four. The application before us, um, is the Ramsgate Skate Park Project. The project is for six thousand pounds and they're asking for half that, so three thousand pounds. Um, this is towards the purchase of a second hand mobile skate park, including trailer, trailer. Um, do you want to hand over to councillor Austin?
Do you like to speak on that, councillor Austin?
I can do, certainly.
You don't have to. Hang on, sorry.
Wait, can I just ask, there is the East Kemmen Cap?
That will be at the next.
That's it, okay, sorry, that being left out because I think, thank you, sorry.
Big forward, councillor, councillor Green, had his hand up, did you?
I was just going to express a concern I have about this application. And the first guideline of, um, the Ramsgate Fund is the project must be to the benefit of the residents of Ramsgate. A note in the application form that the skate park project has shown being that membership is only to the local fund. And also that this is a mobile skate park. And I guess would be used outside of Ramsgate. Um, all in favour of this project, I think it's a great project. But I'd rather Ramsgate, you might want towards the fixed part of the skate park project rather than the mobile part. Because in the past, we've supported mobile facilities. And we're trying to be anywhere, everywhere, except in Ramsgate. So I'm concerned, just concerned, that's all.
Thank you.
There is no plan whatever to use this anywhere other than in Ramsgate. We see it as a first stage towards engaging more young people in the local area in using the skate park at the war wreck. If anybody's been to the war wreck, a number of us have spent a bit of time there recently. The rest of the war wreck is great, it's playing fields, it's well looked after, et cetera. But the area around the skate park is like, you know, it's a, a, a vision of hell, really. It's, um, we, we took the, the U C cabinet member there last summer and he said, I'm so ashamed. He said, and I have to say that this is probably the worst facility I've seen, although there are a number of others that are similar across planet. They've just been really, really badly neglected. Uh, it will take some time and quite a bit of money to, uh, establish the fixed skate park in the form that we want with street skating facilities and so on. That will be a major project. We do expect to be able to bring money in from Sport England and elsewhere to do that. But in the short term, we would like to take the opportunity to purchase these items. We intend to use them only locally, primarily at the pie factory facility, which is next door, in order again to draw more people in, but possibly in other locations in Ramsgate only. In order to raise the profile of, of skateboarding and engage more people and get more publicity for the work that we plan to do later. We have submitted, um, a quite detailed application.
So that will only be staying in?
That will only stay within the realms of Ramsgate and we've submitted an application to Senate District Council for permission to raise funds to do the other work, uh, of which this is the first stage. And I sent that round, um, in response to comments earlier.
Um, picking up on, um, councillor Green's comment, I do note, um, that it actually does say Ramsgate Skate Park Project as the title of, of the organisation. But I just wondered whether or not, um, there were any other venues that, um, you envisaged using apart from, you talked about the war wreck with the pie factory. Are there any other venues within Ramsgate that you envisage in the short term or is it just those?
I don't think it's just the war wreck, but we haven't, we haven't, um, landed on any others as yet. We know obviously that there's quite a lot of skaters who use the area around the bandstand on the east cliff. So there, there are other negotiations to be had, I think. But we've obviously got to make sure that the facilities that we use are entirely safe. And the, uh, multi-use games area by factory, we know is and is regularly inspected and so on. So that will be where we start. And then if there's other possibilities, then we investigate the list going on.
Who, who's in charge of it and gets it out and takes it and?
The instructor, the person who, the person who's on our committee, who, who's going to run the session.
And he's going to be, he will.
He's going to start as a volunteer and then we'll, we'll see how it goes.
And he will take responsibility for the condition of it.
Yeah.
That it's safe, yeah.
And my understanding is that he was fully insured, he's, uh, qualified. Yes, yeah, yes.
Five, five, hang on, hang on.
Just on that point, the application says it would be used in schools too.
Councillor Parker?
Um, I propose that we, um, give the money. Now, there's, there's very little for youngsters to do in Ramsgate and I, I think it's an excellent project. My second up, we should give them the money.
I was going to say the same as councillor, but this has been going on a long while, this money's been trying to be raised for this skate park. And I think it's a really worthwhile activity and we've got some international skaters in this area, we could really start doing some stuff.
Uh, I'd just like to ask on, in relation to the app, the application where it says, uh, is the Ramsgate Town Council is familiar with the work and it's got here councillor Wing and councillor Hartley?
Oh dear. Councillor Cretton, I have, have this difficulty that we have a bias against this.
Okay, uh, we have a.
Do you want me to leave while you?
Thank you. Thanks for riding. Councillor?
Would it be possible to ask the organisation to state that it would only be used in Ramsgate?
Are sure we can get a, we get written confirmation with that? Would you be okay to add that to your?
Yeah, sure.
Proposal?
I seconded that.
A second, councillor Cretton, all in favour?
Yep.
Thank you.
Keep it there.
Come back now.
Right, chuck that out.
That was a shame, wasn't it?
Just to, just to let you know councillor Austin, that as, as part, whilst the, the funding has been approved, uh, the council has asked the town clerk effectively to write to the organisation for written confirmation, written confirmation that it will not be taken out of Ramsgate.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done for doing that.
Yeah, well done. Um, okay. Oh, Becky Pudding, yes, you're right.
Um, members, there was a previous application for East Kemmen Cap and they were awarded three and a half thousand pounds, uh, back in March, um, to offer taster sessions to promote their new complex needs service at Foresters Hall. But frustratingly, this is from them, we are having difficulties recruiting staff for this service, so haven't been able to get started yet despite our best intentions. Is there any chance it would be possible to extend the grant period, please, uh, to complete in January twenty twenty three? They, the award was made in March, um, a report, a returns form and use of the funds, um, deadline is the seventeenth of September. They are struggling to get, um, the staff in, to employ the staff to do this, um, give this service. So that is why they're asking for extension to the thirty first of January. Um, council to decide, please.
I propose, I suppose we extend it, it is really difficult to get mental health professionals at the moment, so I can totally understand how they're struggling. I mean, definitely how the local trust is struggling, so.
That's great.
Thirty first of January would still give us plenty of time to use the money elsewhere if we needed to.
I totally support that, mental health issues in, in our area are horrendous to get seen to. Uh, I know from personal situations, so, um, yeah, I, I mean, I fully support that. So, proposed from councillor Everington, sent by councillor Nixie, the proposal is carried. Proposal be accepted, all those in favour? Thank you. Yeah, really good. Item seven, um, real hot topic, open spaces and bins. Um, so seven point one, to receive a written report from the town clerk and RFO regarding pocket parks.
So this is a proposal that the technicians brought to me and they think that there could be a significant lift in, um, in the area if instead of necessarily thinking about them taking on big parks, they said that there's, there's a variety of little areas, pockets, little places around the wards that, um, are, that kind of fall off T D C's agenda and radar. And they think that, um, by taking on responsibility for these little areas, it could, it would, it would help lift the area.
I, I per, I'm sorry, I, I personally, I think it's a great idea. Um, I've been trying to get the one at St Lawrence sorted with T D C and get nowhere. And subsequently about to ask if, if our, if our, anyone from our team can actually do it. And, and, and as well, if there's, anyone's got any others that they wish to put in. So I wasn't sure which way around it went, could you, all right, if I go that way, councillor Cretton?
Um, just to say that some of these might actually be owned by K C C, not T D C. I know the one at the raised bed at the biodead stores, for example, at Margate Road is.
Check that out.
Um, but yes, that's why I'm just saying to check out the ownership because some of these may not be T D C.
Yeah.
Can I just jump in there and say, because?
Yeah.
I was at first actually, but can we do an audit of those spaces that we know where they are?
Yes.
First, and then obviously know where they are, and then that would knock that issue on the head, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
You can see, uh, you know, getting a visual representation of where these little spaces are anyway and all four of them.
Map, map that out.
Yeah.
That's agreement, councillor.
I think this is a great initiative by, by the technical staff. Um, they already do some spaces in, which we're very grateful for. Um, so I think we should encourage them, but just a little cautious about service level agreement. Because that's a commitment to T D C that we would do. Um, and recent experience with the services staff means that we could find that we're not able to do it.
I think if I could.
On an informal basis, correct? Just cautious about the service level agreement.
I, I certainly think from my point of view, uh, that you're absolutely right, David, but I think now with the change at the top of the, of the council's, uh, office structure, um, there appears to be a change already um, in relation to, uh, responses to members, um, which is the important part. Um, so, but also I would like to, to, to be looking as whether there is anything, because it's not on it. Any, is there anywhere in Newington, is there anywhere in, any, any, anywhere else that, that those type of places that, that, that we could do? But I certainly agree with councillor Green that the proper service level agreement needs to be taken into account. Councillor Piper?
I noticed, thank you Chair, um, I noticed, um, that the, the brambles and the nettles on the embankment that goes, uh, down the, over the railway bridge, where it goes down, that's all been cut back, which is great, but it still looks absolutely dreadful. It's just, there's deep litter buried in it. And we, we try to promote Ramsgate and surrounding areas of tourists. Uh, I'm not quite sure what we can do about.
Is that railway land?
It is railway land. Uh, I'm not sure when then.
Every year.
Before, um, Peter passed away, bless him, he, he said that the technicians would take on board that area. Because I asked him to and he said that would be the case. It has been cut back, um, but it would take a, a large team of volunteers and I, I'd be there as well to clear up all, all the litter that is there. I mean, you would, you would fill a, a, a skip at least with all the rubbish that is there. It is a real eyesore. Um, and I've tried to find out who owns the land and it's, you know, you've got to do your own land registry search.
Yeah, it is rail, it is network rail, so people, yeah.
Um, I was at the recreation park near the new Aldi, whenever, over the weekend sometime. And I don't mean to sound really horrible, but that is a poor excuse.
Where's that?
It's boundary park.
Boundary park, yeah.
Boundary park. The bench that's actually inside the boundary of the park only has two slats to sit on. And the contraptions for the children, um, this are not adequate. There's no slide, there's no climbing frame. And for me, I thought, is this the best we can do? It really is a poor excuse for.
If I can just butt in there.
If there is funding and.
This under section one O six agreement from the, from the development to, to, on the side. So that, but that's for, that's for the, not for the Aldi, but it's from the housing part, which Blueberry Homes will be developing. And then money will come across.
Oh, right, okay.
Here and everything. We've also, as, as all councillors, met with Mike Humber.
Yeah.
Uh, about various things there, things that need moving away from, to separate the little tiny tops from the teenagers. So there is work that's been undertaken with that, so, so really we'll be doing it.
And the embankment, I'm, I'm not sure what we can do about that.
Hmm, not sure, but anyway, councillor Nixie?
Also going back, I, I agree with councillor Green entirely about service level agreement because I mean, and, and, and thank God we've got a change of, um, couple of us from the top, so that's going to make a big difference. But I think that's why I suggested an audit as well, because it'd be very interesting to see where things, you know, lie, whether it's, nobody knows who owns K C C, T D C, and so on and so forth. And also how badly neglected they are in comparison to who owns them. Um, so obviously we do the ones that nobody knows necessarily, because at least we can tackle those ones ourselves, if you know what I mean. But with regards to the embankment, which, you like, say, it comes up every year and it's absolutely awful. And we are trying to, to get to, to Newington and Northwood and various other places. Wasn't that, we suggested last week that we suggest all the time about the community payback team? Surely that's a big, proper tack, job that we could tackle. So isn't that something that we can put down as, as a?
I, if, if I may, councillor Nixie, I think, I think what we could do is to, is to contact community safety at Senate District Council and ask them, because they're the people who will direct the community payback and ask them to come along and do that. And I think that's a good idea. So can I just go back round to councillor Huxley?
So long, long time again, it's in Central Harbour Ward, I tried to get that cleared, that land.
Yeah.
And, um, it's railway land.
Yeah.
Network rail have got a very poor reputation, they can't be contacted, maybe they're better now. Um, there would be a sort of insurance issue on that, so we say the U C technician started working. So say the technician started working on it. What is the issue, there is an issue with that, because it's not our land, it's not TDC's land.
Shouldn't just send it on it.
That is a.
I think that's something, isn't it?
That's probably why it's such a mess, goes. Yes.
Councillor Grittenon?
Just a couple of small points on that. The land at the Viaduct, which has been slightly cleared. Maxine did start a bit of a campaign with residents a number of months ago. And I was one who wrote to the railway company to complain about that. But they've done something, but not a lot. And we do now have a quote for the work for Boundary Park.
Oh, good.
Which you won't be aware of. Which is, because it's come through on the hub. And so that is, might be moving forward a little bit, but it is, we're yet to find out quite exactly what they've quoted for, so.
Okay, sorry, councillor Green?
Well, I see it as my role as chair, I think it appeared to be a little cautious. I do think we need to go into this with our eyes open.
Absolutely, yeah.
An audit, I think, is essential. And having done the audit, we need to be sure that we can service all the things that.
That we're saying, yeah.
Stuff that we've got. Otherwise, we're going to have to prioritise, which will be difficult. So I just think we need to think about.
Town clerk, is that something, obviously currently in the moment, we've got several staff who are sick for one reason or another. I know Mr Barton is currently office bound because of his issues. Is that something that he could look into without him causing him any issues? If he could do that from land researches, et cetera, et cetera?
I think the wall of councillors shouldn't have.
Yeah, 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 indeed. But I mean, you can always, I mean, that's something, if we could coordinate that, that would be good. Obviously, the recommendation is for us to consider if this is a proposal that we would like to explore. And I think the answer to that, by the sound of it, is yes. It's a simple answer, so if we can explore that. Town clerk, that would be lovely, all in favour of that? You'll second it or propose it and second it? Let's get that forward. Okay, thank you.
Could we thank the technicians for their initiative?
Oh, indeed, indeed, indeed. Indeed, indeed. Right. Bins to receive a written report, town clerk, RFO, regarding a request from TDC in respect of town centre bins.
So we've received a request from TDC as to whether the technicians can empty the bins in what they described as the pedestrian area in the afternoons. At the moment, TDC empty these bins. It's eight or ten bins, if you include York Street. At the moment, TDC empty the bins in the morning. And then where they start very early in the morning, they team clock off at two thirty. And quite often the bins are overflowing in the afternoon. So they're not proposing to withdraw a service that they currently provide. They've identified that there's a problem when their staff are not working and whether the technicians could assist with the problem. A couple of initial thoughts that I raised with Mr Greening at the time was that we currently don't work on weekends, so we couldn't provide a weekend service. We might struggle to provide this service every day. There could be times when technicians are needed on other projects. Could TDC provide an emptier suitable bin so that technicians not having to drive the contents over to the Mantstone depot? Mark said, yes, they could provide a bin at Ramsgate House, or we could use the ones by the multi-story car park. And I did say that we'd want all of TDC's risk assessments, PPE, bags. I'm speaking with the technicians, I think they're, they agree that this is a problem and a problem that they could help with, but the prospect of signing up to do it every single day is worrying.
If I could, sorry, councillor. If I could just say, as part of that, I was there for most of them, I actually, unfortunately, just before the end. But my view is that they should be looking, TDC should be looking itself, that we have along the beaches, they've changed the way that the bins are emptied on the beaches. So they have a split shift, they do a morning shift and do an evening shift. And I'm sure that that's something that they need to be looking at to actually do that themselves in relation to this. Again, we're putting more, I'm concerned about we're putting more onto our technicians and that we're, I believe that we're stretched as it is. And I don't think this is something that we should do. That's just my opinion. That's the Nixie.
My proposal is that we don't accept this at all, because they've got a problem, TDC have got a problem, as I highlighted it. They need to sort it out, as I said. Is it split shift or you hire somebody else in, they're asking us, I understand. But we have demands of our technicians and we're at full capacity. And it's not going to get any better, even if we do it, there's still going to be things that are going to be needed to do that's just going to fall back on us. I'm very much against it. I realise there's a problem, I'm not saying that there isn't, but I don't think us, asking us to do it is actually solving that problem. And therefore I would be against this.
You were supposed to, councillor Green?
I think I'm pretty much in agreement with that. My concern is that it says here we could not provide this service currently on a weekend. So I am going to ask, do TDC provide the service on the weekend? I'm guessing.
I guess they do, but only until I pass two.
At least on Saturday, I don't know about Sunday. And then if we're not doing this at the weekend, would they then cover that? Or is, are we going to end up with the public having an inconsistent service? And that would, that's one of the things that concerns me, is that the public won't receive an inconsistent service because we're not doing weekends. And so there are other options about more bins.
More bins means more staff, where they can't afford staff. You can't, the more bins you include, then the more work that. That produces and therefore they need more staff and they haven't got enough staff and they can't pay for it.
An extra round.
They can't do it, they haven't got enough. This is why they're asking us. But they need to find another way of dealing with it. And I think the split shift, which is what they're at, but that's not for me.
Do you potentially more staff is what I'm saying, if they're doing a split shift?
No, 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 no.
No?
No.
Okay, all right then.
But it's in Margate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've done for years.
On emphasising the positive, can I say what a good thing it is that Mark Greening has taken the initiative of contacting us and that he's going to be talking to the town and parish councils?
Yeah.
Meanwhile, at TDC on overview and scrutiny, we now have a working group chaired by Alan Curry on improving TDC's relationship with town and parish councils and developing better ways of working together so that we're not.
That's going, it's still going.
Not always assuming that, you know, that TDC will delegate staff to town and parish councils who will take it on unwillingly because they're the ones who, you know, et cetera. Hopefully it will help to build a better relationship. But I absolutely agree that this is something that is the TDC's responsibility. Mark has been saying about how the, having the environmental cooperative, who's an appointment you approved Chair when you were cabinet member, will make the team more flexible, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I can see that flexibility in practice, don't we?
Yeah, yeah. Councillor Green?
Remove to bigger bins, that's half the problem. Or bins that can press further, et cetera.
I suppose they could do that, it's up to them if they're going to do that. Councillor Mackinson?
There's still a huge problem of people putting their household waste. And I have no idea what to do about that. I have on occasion, if something is lying around, looked to see if there is a, something with the name and address on it. And I have actually either put it back through their letterbox or with a note on it saying, you've done for this. But that does fill up the bins. And the one in Needham Street, I don't know whether that car park, I don't know whether that's included in the thing. It's a big one, but it's, I've come across people all the time.
I know, that's education, isn't it? You know, that's for people that can't be, they're lazy and that's the problem. Councillor Piper?
Just, I didn't realise that the bins are emptied after two thirty and they're emptied in the morning. I mean, this is a seaside town and most people come in the sunny afternoons and they picnic and they enjoy the sunshine, the town, the beach. That's absolutely ridiculous. I mean, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but why do they knock off at two thirty? Most normal work would be, knock off two thirty, start very early, but sure, yeah. It's a shift, don't you?
They start a shift, yeah, but anyway, but it's, councillor Huxley, did you have your hand up?
Yes, it is a problem for domestic wasting litter bins, you know, we had it in La Bella Lions Square.
Yes, we have, yeah.
Streets in enforcement at TDC, they sort that out, they would do the waste and try and find, you know, if there's any ID in it, and they put notices on the bins.
Yeah.
So that is something they do do. So you need to contact, there's an email address, streets in enforcement at sannet.gov.uk.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Green.
Just wanted to pick up on the wording in the recommendation, but on the side where it says the technicians are currently considering the practicalities. And it is something that's hard for a period. I'm just wondering what the technicians are saying about how this would be done? And do they think it's something viable? So what's their response to this request?
They think it's viable, but the concern is the, having the capacity to do it at five days a week. I think possibly if it's something that they just kept an eye on and did ad hoc would be a lot easier to.
We don't have a lot of technicians really, do we? For making regular equipment like this.
Can we just, right, sorry, councillor Huxley?
So I was going to say the same, councillor.
Okay.
I'd propose that we don't accept it, but.
I'll second that. Sorry?
Could I propose an amendment that we do say to Mark Green that we are, that we will keep an eye on things and we're happy to think, consider working with him in future, but that we don't actually think this is our responsibility?
I think.
Close the door?
Yeah, I think that's something probably for myself and the town clerk to talk to Mark Green in about.
I was about to.
And, you know, obviously we want to keep the dialogue going, but we need to talk to him anyway about the issues that we have with it. Instead of just putting it in black and white, I'd rather talk to the guy.
Can I add that he's coming to the litter forum with the voluntary groups and so on in a couple of weeks' time, along with Bob Beaufort?
Oh, Uncle Bob's coming, isn't he?
As long as we promise not to ambush him, because he's been to meetings in Ramsgate before, I quote.
He'll get a nosebleed, he'll get a nosebleed when he comes out of the hall from Broadstairs.
So come down here that much.
And the issue about, I'm really pleased that the technicians are talking direct to Mark about bins, because that's something we've done for the litter forum as a regular thing, but actually that personal contact is.
Right, okay, can we just, so are we in favour of that?
It is a commitment, that we're both.
Yeah, we don't want a regular commitment.
So are we all in favour of that proposal, second, are we in favour to take this on? Thank you. Exclusion, item eight, exclusion of the oppressed and public.
Those to be excluded.
Close that, second up? All in favour? Thank you.